This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council is coming to order. Call and roll, please.
James DeVito.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Joyce Zeller.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Vicki Snyder.
Go.
E. Perkypile.
Here.
We have six.
All right, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brings us to approval of the agenda motion to discuss.
Moved to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Changes, deletions. Mr. Mitchell, you had your hand up first.
Yes, sir. I think number six, under unfinished business, we do not have a ordinance sample to look at, so I'd like to see if we could just table that one. And then, under new business, number three, clean city ordinance, we don't have an ordinance draft yet from the attorney, so I'd be prudent to table that one also.
What was that again? Clean city ordinance?
Six and three.
New business three.
Six under unfinished and three under new business. And I think we have everything else. If my checking is correct.
Your second, or one else?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to move item seven, under new business, Carroll Boone Transmission Line Resolution, to number one, under unfinished business.
Second.
Okay. Get to number one. Number seven. Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the amendment of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. This is on to approval of the minutes for October the fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Changes, deletions, corrections. All in favor of the minutes, as they are, say aye.
Aye.
They vote the same, motion carried. Commission Committee Authority reports as prior terms, planning, Beverly.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we have a joint workshop tomorrow night at six o'clock. And also, there seems to be a lot of vacations appearing on all of our agendas, from parks to planning to your agendas. And I would like to remind the council that planning has sent over procedures that we would like to see in the code book, if you would be so kind as to add it to a future agenda. Also, we have some zoning definitions we need added to a future agenda, as well as a definition, or a few changes about home occupation. Under new business, number two, we've not seen the ordinance for that one yet either. And number four, we have a public hearing for that on November twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. It looks like the next one will be cemetery commission. Ms. Panell, come on in. And Mr. Fugit, how are you?
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to see you all again. I haven't reported a commission report for a while. I stand to blame. It has just been a crazy roller coaster summer for our family, and I'm going to try to make it up to you tonight. Well, anyway, I'm going to start with our Memorial Day event. We had a good turnout. We didn't get any press coverage, which was a bit disappointing, but we had a good turnout. We had several speakers that were just delightful. We had some wonderful singers. We had a fiddler. It was just a wonderful event that did bring in some donations, of which we were extremely We also hired a new groundskeeper. His name is Will Morehouse, and he's a single daddy with two little girls. Otherwise, he would come to council to meet you all, but it's really hard being a single daddy. He just gets the girls from school and has to get right on home to tend to their needs. But if you ever get a chance, if you're driving by the cemetery Monday through Friday, drive on in there and say hi to Will and introduce yourself. I know he'd be delighted to meet each of you. Some things we've been doing out at the cemetery. It's been a busy, busy summer. As you know, the last time I reported, we were doing a new expansion, which included Block twenty-seven extension. Well, our previous sex tent was the one who had actually mapped and plotted that area in June. The commission had identified some issues regarding the mapping and plating of that area. So since then, we have been taking a lot of time to replat, remap that entire area, just to make sure that everything is numbered correctly. This was met with commission vote approval in our June meeting, and then work began immediately afterwards. So if you do see any of us out there measuring, and we have lines strung here and there, you'll know why. It's not that we're doing anything drastic to the cemetery. We're just making sure that everything is numbered and plotted correctly. With vote approval from the commission, we did decide that we would continue to sell plots in that newly expanded area, and we let each and every party know that we would not be issuing the deeds right away. Everybody understands. There really weren't too many. In fact, Mr. Romanski, who you're going to meet in a bit, is one of our purchasers, and he will vouch for that, that everything was done on the up and up. And he knows that his deed is forthcoming, but those plots are his. And this Friday night, I want to encourage the community especially, as well as council, or anybody's free, Chasers is hosting a benefit for our cemetery. From what I understand, it's going to be a rather large benefit, and you're all invited to come. There's going to be food, raffle, silent auction, there's going to be music. Sounds like a good time. I'll be there. It starts at 6:00 P.M. Now, let's see what else I want to let you know. Oh, yes. We also approved in our September meeting what's called a mapping and plating committee. We don't feel that putting this burden on our groundskeeper was fair. His primary duty is taking care of the cemetery grounds. So therefore, we formed a mapping and plating committee that consists of Ken Fugit, it consists of Will, when he's available, if all his work is caught up, and it consists also of my husband, Ken. My husband, Ken, kind of got involved because Will had hurt his ankle rather badly, and this was in August. And we were frantic. We had a funeral in a couple days, and we really wanted to make sure before every funeral, no matter who it is, that everything is just pristine and perfect. And there was nobody to do the work. So my husband just got up early one morning and said, "I'm out to the cemetery." He said, "God's put it on my heart. I got to get it mowed." And I said, "Okay, you know, go ahead." And he did do the mowing. He did a lot of weed eating. He made sure it looked perfect for this funeral that was coming up. And then, it just so happened, I had called City Hall that morning to let the mayor's office know that Ken Fugit and I would be out at the cemetery doing some measuring in this plating area that we're redoing. And Ken did add a little bit of expertise in that area as well. We thought, gee, it sure would be nice to have a third hand helping with this project. I am no good at holding anything. Do not ask me to hold a measuring tape 200 feet across. It's going to move. It's going to do something wacky. I'm just not the person to help with this kind of stuff. So Ken Fugit and my Ken are really good and steady at holding things like that, and marking, and making sure everything is perfect. So the mapping and plating committee was formed. And with that, I would like to introduce you to Hank Romanski. He has an application into you all for a vote to be placed on our commission. He is a retired policeman. We are just thrilled that he considered our commission to serve on. So I asked him to be here tonight in the event that any of you might have any questions for him before you vote. Anybody? Hank is the gentleman sitting here in the tie, looking all dapper and spiffy in his suit coat. And he's probably a little bit nervous, and I told him that you all were a great bunch of people, and you had nothing to worry about. He was just nice as could be about it, but he is a little intimidated by you all. So if nobody has any questions for Hank, nobody?
I don't have a question.
Welcome.
I'm grateful to have you step up and volunteer, because
Thank you.
we're always short on commissions. Is that a motion? Not yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next will be the consideration for the nomination of Mr. Romanski for position number four.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, sir.
You're in.
You're in like Flynn.
Nice to see you again.
You too, sir.
Thank you very much.
Get your doing shoes on. Okay. There you go.
I'm bringing it forward.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for volunteering for this position. Okay, that moves us on to public comments. No public comments. Wow, that's a first. Move this on to unfinished business. So we move new business number seven up to unfinished business number one, be the Carroll Boone Water District Transmission Line Resolution. Motion to discuss.
Second.
You're up.
Good evening. Don't may remember me. I'm Chris Hall. I'm representing the Carroll Boone Water District for the Phase One improvements, and it's a parallel thirty-six inch line along the thirty inch that's existing, from the plant all the way to the your east meter over on twenty-three. And one of the things that we have to do, according to the memorandum of understanding between the four member cities and the district, is if they go into debt, they have to get a resolution from three of the four cities for approval to be able to go into more debt to take, do these improvements. Actually, at this time, I can report that we've gotten Green Forest, Harrison, and Berryville all approved the resolution, but the district, the board, did not want to move forward without letting you all go ahead and do your vote, because at the last meeting, we discussed that you all took under advisement, and we're going to vote on it this time. So we wanted to put that in front of you all tonight, and hopefully, you know.
Mr. McCall.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we assign a number, a resolution number for this as it is prepared and approved, and read it into the record.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll wait for the number.
Resolution number will be six-two-nine. Carroll Boone Water District Transmission Line, whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, purchases quality water in substantial amounts to meet its needs from the Carroll Boone Water District hereinafter referred to as the District, under a memorandum of understanding, M.O.U., date December eighteen, nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas the M.O.U. requires the District to make a continuing study of the water needs and expected future requirements of its customers, and provide raw water supply, storage, treatment, and transmission system expansion as required to meet those needs, and whereas the District's master plan update dated September, two thousand and thirteen, prepared by the engineering firm of McGood Wynn Williams and Gates Incorporated, identified recommended improvements required to meet the needs of the District's customers to be phased over the next twenty years, including constructing a new water transmission line parallel to the existing transmission line, and whereas the District may need to increase its bonded indebtedness to finance the projects, and whereas the memorandum of understanding requires approval of three of the four customer cities before continuing with expansion projects that would increase the District's bonded indebtedness. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the City expresses its concurrence with the expansion projects identified in Phase One of the master plan referenced above.
Thank you. There you go.
On behalf of the District and our firm, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. This is on to number two, discussion of the ordinance for the panel of pentile vacation.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Wait, what happened?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, we go back, I'm sorry. We go back to the original number one, which is ordinance discussion ordinance, two-one-eighty-nine, be the second reading for increased parking rates, special events, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Ms. Snyder.
I'm not seeing it. Do we have paperwork from our attorney in regards to this at all? Am I looking right at it?
If it's the second reading, we should have already had it.
Oh, okay, well, it's at home. Okay, you said that there might be a problem being able to figure out what groups were charity groups and whatever. Did we get past that?
I don't know how you do, really.
Well, it's real easy. When they come in, they're either a for money business, or they're a fundraiser type situation, where all the funds are going to whomever.
Well, you would have to define that by ordinance, how you want to do that, or whether you wanted to only allow 501(c) corporations that are charitable.
Well, we were talking about them having a lesser or no rate at all, as opposed to business entities paying the raised rate.
Well, if you simply let them define what they are, most of them are going to tell you they're a charity. If you only use the federal government's definition of what has been allowed as a charity, most of them are not going to qualify. So you would have to come up with some kind of definition that you can settle on if you want to exempt the charitable ones. But most of them are not granted status under the federal government.
Right, but most of, okay, we have, I think the two examples I used before was the Eurekan, which is definitely for profit, and Charles Ragsdale's, which is for fundraising, basically. Okay? It doesn't have to necessarily be a charity, but it's all going to, it's not going in his pocket, it's going to.
Well, if you take that perspective, some of those organizations that donate their funds also take out of those expenses and other things that would not be allowable necessarily under the federal law for being a charity. So if you simply say they're a charity, you really have to come up with a definition.
That's why I don't like the word charity. That's why I'm bringing up, do we need to put a line or a paragraph or whatever, saying when this is a fundraiser for, these are our guidelines?
I don't know really how to write that definition. I mean, if you want to give me some guidance of what you want, maybe we can come up with a definition, but right now, I think it's very complicated to come up with a definition that would satisfy council as to who is excluded and who isn't.
Mr. McCall.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We had a workshop on this, and I don't think we concluded anything. I don't remember for sure on that, because it's been a while back, and I was going to ask Diane, I'm guessing that maybe she took some notes?
I don't think we touched it.
And did we, did we come up with anything at that?
No.
We didn't?
It was.
It was?
It had three people.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Can we have another one?
You so.
Are we saying that we want to exclude everyone who's going to donate a portion of their proceeds to something or other? If I were chairman of an event, I would find something that I could donate one or two percent of the proceeds to, and then I would get free parking. I mean, I think we're opening a can of worms here, trying to sort out who deserves free parking and who doesn't. That's just my first take on the thing.
Got a motion?
No.
Well, I mean, I don't know if I can make a motion to that effect, because it's, and it's had, it's had a reading already, and but, you know, I mean, I
Did it have a reading?
I can, yeah.
I thought all we did was discuss it.
I can certainly vote against it.
We did the first reading.
If it comes up for a second vote, I mean, I'd be more than happy to do that, of course.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, part of what all this was supposed to be about was the rates and restricting how much an event could have, right? Wasn't that part of it?
No, it's all about is raising the fees.
No, we talked about restricting how much area.
You talked about.
No, all of us talked about. The point is, do you know what it was like this weekend down here? And I mean downtown, down here?
Busy.
Really? With whom?
Okay, stay on subject.
Okay, let me explain what happened because of the parking lot stuff, because we have got to deal with this. The auditorium who had the folk festival had the one little strip against the wall, which is what had always been talked about. Everything else were the Mini Coopers. I was trying to send people up to Planer Hill and found out the Model Ts were all up there. There was zero parking in parking lots from the top of the hill as far down as they go down Main Street. We had bumper-to-bumper traffic of our regular visitors trying to get to places, trying to see stuff, and had nowhere to go. The Mini Cooper people pulled in, yes, they rented their spots, whatever, you know, the lots, at the very minimal price. They took every single spot, and nobody else had nothing. We have got to deal, whether we want to or not. If it needs another workshop where everybody shows up, we need to do something.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this reading and schedule maybe another workshop to discuss it. But, so that's a motion.
Second.
May I second?
I'd like to, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, just to continue with that, it brings up sort of a discussion we need to talk about anyway later on tonight, about the possibility for downtown parking facility. It may or may not be feasible. It may or may not be wanted by majority of the people here. But parking is always an issue here, and it's something that we're going to have to deal with forever and ever, you know? So we just need to talk about it rationally and calmly.
Any further discussion?
I would like to add to his motion that we set a time that the attorney can join us. We need his input on how we can break these things down.
I'll amend that a motion to include that, to invite our city attorney.
Okay, of course, he's always invited, so.
Requesting you be a better word.
Specifically invited.
All right. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Postpone.
May I behave as if James seconded the amendment?
Okay, I did.
Thank you.
Okay. Now moves us to unfinished business, normal number two, which is the ordinance to reclaim jurisdiction over one hundred feet of Palo Pinto. Motion to discuss.
Removed. Second.
Floor is open. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, who brought this forward?
Mr. Grinnell.
Mr. Grinnell, would you mind telling us, stepping forward, kind of stepping us through this, please, sir?
I don't know if you have the packet I had, gave you, my Richard round, by the way. I gave you last time when we went over this. Now, but basically, this is just the description of the portion that we want to vacate, being that we have two buildings, well, we don't, we have one building, our neighbor has one building on top of the street, and we're trying to get it vacated so we can get clear tiles so we can sell them at some point.
You're talking about this?
Yes.
Right here.
Mr. Mitchell.
A question for the attorney. Because when we did the motion, we said we vacated the street to the four adjacent property owners, and we named them out, but in the ordinance, we don't have to do that. We just, the ordinance just vacates it in that prior motion to the, to identify the adjacent property owner spans, or how does that work?
What you have here before you is, right now, this section of street or alleyway that's unopened here belongs to parks jurisdiction. This simply brings it back to this table, and then there will have to be an ordinance drafted to transfer it, if you decide to transfer. And then there will have to be also a deed to the property, or two deeds to the property if they're going to split it. Or four. How many of our owners we end up with?
Mr. McCall.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we assign this as been prepared by the attorney, I assume, and assign this ordinance a number to reclaim it from parks, and put it on its first reading.
Second.
Mr. DeVito, you had
No, I was going to do the same thing.
Okay. No further discussion, aye? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Waiting on the ordinance number.
The ordinance number will be two-one-nine-three. An ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city, whereas the City Council previously placed green space within the city under the authority of the Parks Commission, and whereas the City Council now desires to possibly dispose of a part of the unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue, and whereas the Parks Commission and Planning Commission have been consulted, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that the following part of the unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue is removed from the authority of the Parks Commission as it has been previously granted over green space within the city. A part of Palo Pinto Avenue and a part of Ojo Street as shown on the plat of survey for the Freeman Edition to the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, more particularly described as follows to wit. Begin at the northwest corner of Lot One, Block One, said Freeman Edition, thence north to a point located on the north side of said Palo Pinto Avenue, thence east along the north side of said Palo Pinto Avenue, to a point on the east side of said Ojo Street. Said point on Ojo Street being located by a prolongation of the north line of said Palo Pinto Avenue, thence south along the east side of said Ojo Street, to a point that is created by prolongation of the north line of Lot One, Block One, said Freeman Edition, thence west along said prolonged line to the north line of Lot One, Block One, said Freeman Edition, to the point of beginning. Section two, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to move to approve ordinance number two-one-nine-three on its first reading.
Second. May I second? You've got a real call, listen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. DeVito.
Because this is only the first step in a process, I mean, I'm not going to ask for a third reading. I'd like to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number two-one-nine-three on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Now we have to real call.
Yes.
Vicki Snyder.
Yes.
Joyce Zeller.
Yes.
Terry McLung.
Yeah.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
E. Perkypile.
Yes.
Six-zero. Ordinance two-one-nine-three, an ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city.
Mr. DeVito.
To approve ordinance number two-one-nine-three on its second reading. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Further on this one? All right, sir. All right, moves us on to number, check that one out. Number three, ordinance to reclaim jurisdiction of a portion of Nutt Street, motion to discuss.
Remove.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Weaver.
I want to warn council that when I got the legal description on this one, I had a question about it, because it's, appears that it's the Armstrong and Riley survey, but it doesn't use those words in the actual description. But for purposes of reclaiming it from Parks, I think this is sufficient. But when we go, if you do decide to transfer it to new owners, we may have to have them acquire a better legal description if there's not one in existence already.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The ordinance number will be 2194. An ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Nutt Street from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city, whereas the City Council previously placed green space within the city under the authority of the Parks Commission, and whereas the City Council now desires to possibly dispose of a part of the unopened portion of Nutt Street, and whereas the Parks Commission and Planning Commission have been consulted, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that the following part of the unopened portion of Nutt Street is removed from the authority of the Parks Commission as it has been previously granted over green space within the city. A portion of Nutt Street lying between Block 221, Cold Spring Reservation, and the Armstrong survey of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, more particularly described as followed, commencing at the most southern point of Cold Spring Reservation, north forty-three degrees, twenty-four minutes, twenty-seven seconds east, corner of Lot 1 of said Block 221, along the southwest line of said Nutt Street, thirty-point-seven feet wide, and three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-point-nine-nine feet long. Section two, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2194 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Go for it.
I'm going to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2194 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, real call, real.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Terry McLung.
Yes.
James DeVito.
Yes.
E. Perkypile.
Yes.
Joy Seller.
Yes.
Six zero.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2194.
I just got to read it first.
Oh, yeah, she hadn't read it yet. She's a little speedy there.
Ordinance 2194, an ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Nutt Street from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city.
Mr. McLung.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2194 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moves us on to number four, be ordinance number 2191, addition to use in C3, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
Mr. DeVito. Point of clarification on ordinance number 2191, section one, it's been brought to my attention that by using the word "building" as opposed to "business," that, that brings into play the movies that are held at the library, and it might be a better choice of words to use "business" instead of "building." I ask the attorney's opinion on that.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, the library would also be a business. I don't know that it really corrects anything using one or the other. Even though it's a, it's a nonprofit, it's a business, it's an incorporated business.
Would it be grandfathered in as an existing, I mean, would they have to abide by the new regulations regarding parking?
Well, technically, they probably should.
Houston, we have a problem.
So how would we fix that?
Change it.
We could put an exemption in there for that particular, as a, an already existing, and we could make a slight change to the ordinance to do that.
Mr. Perk.
I'd like to make a motion to send this ordinance back to city attorney to make that change.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Beverly had an opinion on that in the last council meeting. How, how did planning feel about that when I brought it up?
When I spoke with the city attorney about this, what these things are are categories that are in our code book. There are several categories, and then, once you find the category that you are, then you get your business license for that. I wouldn't think that the, the library would say that they were in a category of intimate theater now. That was my understanding. That was what planning thought when we brought it here.
To clarify, I, I agree with what I just, what I just heard from the chair of the Planning Commission. I don't think, but because it's become an issue, you may want to straighten it out more. I, I don't really think it is intimate theater, as far as the library is concerned. I don't think it falls necessarily in that category, but simply exempting it as part of the ordinance may clear up some concern among the citizens of the town. I, I really agree that, with what I told her before, that I don't think it necessarily fits into that category. I mean, it's a library.
Mr. McLung.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but, I, I, I mean, the library doesn't, if it, if it does show a film or something, it's not something it charges for, does it?
Free.
Free? Okay.
What's in here?
Have a motion in a second on the floor? Would you please repeat the motion?
To send it back to the city attorney to correct the language.
Any amendments to that? Mr. Perk.
Yes, let me add that we're going to exempt the library from this particular ordinance, this requirement.
Everybody understand the motion is stated and amended? Is there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
We need a second.
Oh, okay. Thought we had a second for Mr.-
Second.
For the amendment, okay. All right. Now we have a second on the amended motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, back to Mr. Weaver. Okay, moves us up to number five, ordinance for land bank, motion to discuss.
Remove.
Second.
Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
It is correct, okay. 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 Rush, you need to say anything on this? Yes.
Good evening, mayor, councilman. I'm hoping that we are coming close to having a finished ordinance here. I, I did notice one thing that I wanted to consult the city attorney about that may or may not be, need to be addressed. Tim, if we go to section eight, it says the land bank may be funded through private donations made specifically for the acquisition, acquisition of real property and easements. Now, nowhere else in the ordinance does it state that the land bank can be used for obtaining easements, and that is also one of the central parts of this ordinance, is that we would like to be able to obtain recreational easements from monies from the land bank. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
You mean like an easement across somebody else's property for continuation of a trail?
That's exactly correct.
Well, to do that, section five could better define purchase or lease, and the third line says interest of the city to purchase or lease, and that would probably clear up the concern you have.
Okay.
Where is this?
Paragraph five.
Section number five, line number three.
So it would read how?
To purchase or lease.
In the third line?
Yes.
Any other questions?
And then also the same line where it says purchase again, or lease.
Where is it?
Same line.
It's the same line, just further down.
Oh.
In the same third line.
I see. Thank you.
Mr. Levine's up here, going to ask him any questions. Okay. Mr. McLung.
Yeah, um, I'm, um, well, yeah, I mean, I guess it might as well come up here, because it'll come up here. It's going to come up anyway. Like these, the two pieces that we just did the first and second reading on, the taking away from Parks, putting back in the city, and, and then once we do that, then we vacate. Now, there, to me, is, is a real unfairness going on in the fact that, that the, the piece on Palo Pinto is being taken back at no charge, other than just a filing fee or a request fee, isn't that correct?
I think planning is going to have a, a administrative fee, filing fee-
Yeah.
-coming up.
Okay, but, but then the other piece, and it still follows under Parks jurisdiction, no differently than Palo Pinto, but Nutt Street, because of its location in, in, in the city, is, is going to be charged a fee to vacate per lot. And, and I, I think it's very unequal. The city has the same jurisdiction over each subdivision or each development, whatever you want to call it, and just because one came later, it's still, the city still controls it the same way. The person has to come to the city, do the exact same thing to vacate, because it's under the city limits. And I think it's discriminatory that one would have to pay and one does not.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schneider.
Why isn't Palo Pinto having to pay? I thought they were.
Mr. Weaver.
The only property that we own, the unopened streets and alleyways in, is the three-hundred-and-twenty acres that were of the original-
That's right.
-deed to the city. And therefore, I would take a little bit of disagreement with Councilman McLung's, because we do own that property. We do not own the other properties in the other surveyed areas.
True. That, that part is true.
We do have more control over those original three-hundred-and-twenty acres and the portion that has been deeded to the city.
But if we don't own like Palo Pinto, how can we give it up?
We have the right to it. When it was planted, we were given a, basically the right to use it, an easement over it. But we were not given deed to it.
It's not a deed.
The original deed belongs to the property owners, but we would have to release our easement over it.
Okay, let's slow down and do that step by step, because I know I'm not the only confused one. If the property owners have the deed-
They cannot use it, though, because of our easement.
So we have to basically vacate our easement-
Yes.
-for them to have their property back.
Yes, because when it was originally surveyed and set up, it was set up as a city street or a city alley, depending on which property we're talking about in town, except in the three-hundred-and-twenty acres where it was originally deeded directly to the city, which is a very strange setup. You'll only find it in two or three other cities in the whole state, where they actually own the dirt under the streets, in that matter.
Any further questions? Okay.
We have no motion.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2195.
Thinking of the description.
An ordinance for the creation of a land bank committee for use in disposing of certain unneeded properties and obtaining certain other needed properties and for other purposes, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, desires to create a land bank committee and a land bank account to aid in the receiving and expending of funds for purchase and disposal of real property deemed to be in the best interest of the City of Eureka Springs, and, whereas in order to preserve the unique green spaces and parks of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the quiet enjoyment of its residents and visitors, funds resulting from the sale of city property that has no benefit to the city should be expended for the purchase of other properties that will enhance green spaces and parks within the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section one, a land bank committee shall be formed consisting of seven members. Membership will include the director of the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission, one Eureka Springs alderperson, the director of Eureka Springs Public Works, and the director of the Eureka Springs Finance Department, one Eureka Springs Parks Commissioner, and two at-large members. The members will be nominated by the mayor and approved by the City Council to serve two-year terms. Section two, the land bank committee will review and categorize real property owned by the city into three classifications. Developable spaces, areas that have reasonable access and are large enough to be used for parking gardens, parks, or building sites. Two, conforming open spaces, areas adjacent to spring reservations, trails, parks, greenways, or open spaces that contribute to the welfare of the community. Three, non-conforming open spaces, areas that meet none of the above criteria and are typically, but not always, isolated, single lots or parts of lots of no value to the city. Section three, the land bank committee may bring non-conforming open spaces to the City Council from time to time for authorization by ordinance for sale of said property in accordance with city code and Arkansas state statutes, that any funds received from such sales shall be held in the land bank account, that all funds held in that line item shall remain in that line item until spent, irrespective of the length of time which may pass. Should the City Council see fit to dissolve the land bank committee at some future day, said funds would be transferred to the City General Fund. Section four, the funds in the land bank account shall be expended only in accordance with the direction of the land bank committee with the approval of the City Council. Section five, the land bank committee will bring other privately-owned real property to the City Council from time to time, property which the committee deems to be in the best interests of the city to purchase or lease, as part of an ordinance authorizing the purchase or lease of said- lease of said properties with funds held in the land bank account. Section 6, the Finance Director of the City of Eureka Springs is hereby directed to create a budget line item for the establishment of a land bank account. Section 7, resulting funds from the sale or lease of streets and alleys located in the 320 acres of Eureka Springs, which have been deeded to the city, will be deposited in the land bank account. Section 8, the land bank account may also be funded through private donations made specifically for the acquisition of real property and easements. Section 9, any appraisal costs, survey costs, or other attendant costs in the sale or acquisition of real property associated with the land bank committee will be funded from the land bank account, unless said expenses are paid by the buying and/or selling party with whom the city is engaged. Section 10, all ordinances and resolutions, and parts thereof, in conflict herewith, hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 11, provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance.
Mr. Weaver?
I would suggest in Section 5, the first line, the word privately be removed, and before owned, because it may be possible that the city at some point would wish to purchase public property from another entity, be that the federal government, or be it state government, or county. And I thought we'd left the word private out, but apparently it got back in. So if we might, might want to remove that case, we do want to purchase something that's not privately held.
Mr. DeVito?
I'll move to amend the ordinance, striking privately from Section 5.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Snyder?
Page 1, Section 1, it's saying who's going to be the seven members. Five people are really specific, the other two are at large, but the last line says the members will be nominated by the mayor and approved by City Council. Are we talking the two at-large members, as opposed to all seven?
You would also have one alderperson that would be nominated in the same fashion. So you'd have three, actually, that would be that way.
Do we need to specify, in some regard, these are the three seats that will be nominated?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Mr. DeVito?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2195 on its first reading.
Second?
Mr. McClung?
Before you, that I think if you're going to take out the word privately, you better take out the word owned as well, just to make it grammatically.
Yes.
I'll amend my amendment to remove privately owned from Section 5, first line.
And I'll resecond.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Resecond?
We're back to the first...
Back to voting on the approval.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, for the first read.
Correct.
Yes, we are. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, puts us back on track. Okay. No further on that one. Moves us right along.
How's the elevator doing?
Okay. Let's see, ordinance...
It looks cute.
It's our new business.
Okay, number 6 postponed, moves us to new business, be, um, ordinance rezoning 80 Mountain Street to C3, motion to discuss.
I move.
Second?
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito?
I move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 2196, isn't it?
The ordinance number will be 2196, and ordinance rezoning 80 Mountain Street from R1 to C3. Whereas the city agreed to rezone 80 Mountain, from, 80 Mountain Street from R1 to C3 as part of the settlement of a lawsuit, and, whereas the City Council must confirm all zoning changes by ordinance, now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that 80 Mountain Street, see attached legal description, is hereby rezoned from R1 to C3 in conformity with the previous court order entered by the Carroll County Circuit Court. Section 2, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof, in conflict herewith, are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito? Oh, Mr. Beck. Mr. Weaver?
The legal description is actually Lot 18, Lot 19, and 20, Block 79 of the Riley and Armstrong survey of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. And we will get a copy for each of you. I had to obtain the copy from the courthouse today.
Is that...
It will, it, it says see attached, so we'll, we'll attach it for it.
Okay. Mr. DeVito?
I move to ordinance number 2196 on its first reading.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want to do second reading?
No, until it gets the attachment.
Oh, forgot about that.
All right. Moves us to new business, number 2 hours of operation, and animals in C3, motion to discuss.
Second?
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell?
This was in some of the notes that we get from Beverly, that she sends us, her little love notes from planning. And it had to do with the, I don't think it's in ordinance form yet, but there was discussion about the hours of operation, and I think it started at 7:00 in the morning, and went to 9:00 at night, and they had a really nice, planning had a nice definition about clearing the lot, and they have done a really good...
There was sense of state, I guess, just not that good.
Do we need to table this?
Second?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
All in...
Preature, aye.
We missed one.
All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Carry. Number 3 postponed, number 4 postponed, is number 5, which would be...
Yes.
Yes.
It's not, yeah.
Ordinance for, to, group tour franchise changes, motion to discuss.
Second?
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito?
I move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2197. An ordinance amending Chapter 4.20, group tour franchises. Whereas in 2011, the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs reviewed the municipal code relating to group tour franchises, and, whereas the City Council recognizes and understands the need for continuation of the group tour franchise system with certain changes. Now therefore, be it, hereby ordained that Section 1, Chapter 4.2 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. A, 4.20.08b2, for each individual customer for whom Transit arranges seating in a city-owned vehicle, Transit shall be entitled to a fee equal to 65% of the published individual customer fee. B, 4.20.08b3, for groups of 10 or more that have made arrangements directly with Transit for seating on a city-owned vehicle, Transit shall be entitled to a fee equal to 65% of the published individual customer fee, as discounted, as provided herein above in 4.20.01. Transit shall only book groups of 10 or more directly for the same-day tours. Any advanced bookings of groups of 10 or more shall be referred to a group tour franchisee for booking in accordance with any procedures promulgated by the City Transit Department. C, 4.20.08b4, for groups of less than 10 that have made arrangements directly with Transit for seating on a city-owned vehicle, Transit shall be entitled to a fee equal to 65% of the published individual customer fee. D, 4.20.08b5, for each individual customer for whom a group tour franchise arranges seating on a city-owned vehicle and collects payment from the individual, Transit shall be entitled to a fee equal to 40% of the published individual customer fee. The franchise will be responsible for all sales taxes. Section 2, conflicts, all ordinances or resolutions, parts thereof, in conflict herewith, are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 3, severability, in the event, any one or more, the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of law to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision, or provisions, had never been contained herein. Section 4, that to protect... Oh, you're right. Thank you.
Good.
I move to approve ordinance number 2197 on its first reading.
Second?
Mr. Snyder?
Um, okay, so this is basically changing the percentage on what, or with what, do we do the franchise limitations? Who is, and how many, and what forth? Is that at the end of the...
There were, there was, in the documents I was given to use, there was no change to the number at this point. Now, if you wish to do that, that can be done. But this simply changes the fees at this point.
Okay, don't we have a separate one for naming the franchisees?
At this point, there are two franchises in existence. They are perpetually continued, two-year to two-year, if they reapply, and you do not terminate one or the other.
So that's what we do, is at the end of the two-year period?
And that, my understanding is the two-year period expires on the last day of the year, at midnight.
So that's a separate issue thing, no?
This correction, you're wanting, would be to place on future franchises, or renewed franchises.
Okay. Thank you.
In the original ordinance, it does say in 4.20.03, that the number of group tour franchises shall be no more than two, but may be limited by City Council to one, in times when ridership and cost of operation do not warrant the issuance of more than one. Do we have to change that? We had decided at the workshop to change this to one for this reason, because there wasn't enough business to warrant two franchises. So do we have to do that by ordinance, or declaration, or just do it, or what?
You would actually do it by the provisions that are further down in that ordinance for non-renewal or termination. But you can leave it with two in existence for times when, hopefully, the economy improves, and the number of tourists coming into town is greater. But you'd have to go through the actual termination procedure to eliminate one of the two, if both reapply.
Okay, well, our agreement with Mr. Gunnels, the change in the percentages and so forth, both the Transit Director and Mr. Gunnels agreed to this, and they were happy with it, but it was predicated on the notion that there would be only one franchise. So do we have to do something about that?
You have, you have to go through the procedure to eliminate one of them. You don't do it as part of this necessarily.
Okay.
But you need to, you need to look at the provisions in the code on how to terminate one. And there's certain specifics that you've got to give notice, and there's timeframes. The council will have to comply with that in order to eliminate the one.
So we need to get cracking on it, right?
I don't remember seeing that in the code, but okay.
I believe it is in Section, I'd have to look now, Section 10, maybe?
Okay. There is a requirement for the application to be made within a specified time before the expiration of the franchise? And Mr. Gunnels met that timeline, and Mr. Garner did not.
And the code then says, if he did not, he would be a new applicant, and at that time, you could make a determination that there's only one franchise needed, if you so chose.
Okay. So then we're all, okay, we're good to go. Okay.
This simply, simply affects the revenue stream at this point.
Okay.
Any further on this ordinance? If not, we move along.
We can hear on this approval on the first reading.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Now, what about this emergency clause, Bert?
Yeah, we've got to read it three times first.
Well, I know, but I mean, are we supposed to be getting this done tonight?
I don't know that you necessarily have to have it done tonight, but it would be best if it was done before the end of the year. And that's, there's only two more meetings, so if you waited and read it one time each time, the last reading in December, it would not become effective...
For 30 days.
Until after the publication, or note, or noticing of it, and that's 30 days additional. So you'd be into January before it becomes effective. Therefore, it would renew under the old terms, so if you...
So should we do two or three tonight?
You don't have to do two, you don't have to do three, but you probably need to add the emergency clause if you really want it to become effective for the next two-year time period, before the new time period enters in, in December. If you want to do two tonight, that'll move you further along.
Right.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes, I'll suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2197 on its second reading by title only.
Second?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call, though, since suspension of the rules.
Yes.
Troy Seller?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Dean Burkettile?
Yes.
Terry McClung?
Yes.
6-0. Ordinance number 2197, and ordinance amending Chapter 4.20, group tour franchises.
Mr. DeVito?
I move to approve ordinance number 2197 on a second reading.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves us on to number 6, discussion of the downtown parking facility. Floor is open. Mr. DeVito?
Having been through this at least once at council, this is a pretty involved discussion that brings in a lot of different factors, and we're also going to be meeting with planning tomorrow night. I just wonder about broaching the subject, planning, and maybe then going to a workshop, because it is a pretty time-consuming topic.
That's kind of what I was going to say. This ought to be a short discussion tonight. We should, I'd like to make a motion that we do set up a workshop to discuss this, a separate workshop, which is pretty complicated.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Postpone goes to workshop. Moves us on to number 8, discussion of the auditorium agreement, motion to discuss.
I move.
Second?
Floor is open. Y'all have a copy of the new agreement in your, yeah, I'm sure, probably going to need time to look at it and go over it and mull it over. So unless you want to discuss and not entertain a motion to postpone...
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why are we postponing?
So we can read it.
I don't think anybody's had a chance to read it.
Is this it?
This is it.
Okay.
It looks like this.
What's my head mine or your?
Yes.
Oh, because I picked my box up in a timely fashion.
Is this the new contract, or the automatic renewal?
This is the current one, that's given to us by the, the, go ahead.
It's, it's the same contract. The only thing that was added was parking spaces. But the only thing that was added was going to automatically go over, but for the auditorium director, and sometimes they have bands and stuff, we have allocated six spaces for them with a... with approval through the mayor's office. That's the only thing different.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Then it's postponed to next time. Moves us on to number nine, third quarter financials, motion to discuss.
I move.
Second. Floor is open.
Now, is this what we went through at our budget meeting, our budget workshop? Okay.
This is where Ann shows where all the books are.
Clerk had a chance to.
She shows us her books.
Okay, this lovely one, the debt service books, book lives in the finance director's office, so it'll go back there tomorrow morning if you want to take a look at that for the There's a report of the payroll, the clearing accounts, and the cash receipts, and this information is from the old system, but any of it that you want to review and get copies of, it'll be in the clerk's office, and you're welcome to peruse it.
Discussion's coming.
Are you on the new system now?
Partially.
Yeah, just a comment for, for general, in that the fact that we had the opportunity at the budget workshop to see the third quarter reports from the new system, and despite, and we recorded one small change, but we'd like to let everybody know that that new computer system is remarkable, and I think is moved the financial dealings of the city into the 21st century quite well.
Any further? All right, nothing else that takes us out of new business, moves us to an agenda setting, Mr. DeVito.
Nothing here.
Mr. McClung.
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell.
Nothing.
Mr. Perkypile.
Nothing.
Mr. Snyder.
I believe Beverly wanted us to add a discussion of vacations that planning's coming up with. We need to add to the agenda discussion of the planning results of their working on vacations.
Vacation procedures, is that what you want? You wanted vacation procedures.
Sorry, mold allergies are killing me.
Okay, anything else?
I got it.
James.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Ms. Eller.
No.
Okay, city council commis, Mr. DeVito.
I just want to thank everybody that was responsible for this past weekend, because I think everybody had a good time.
Except for the people driving.
Mr. McClung.
Get out and look at the trees, they're getting pretty.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, I do. The noise committee met last week, and have established membership that includes Steve Beecham, Mark Hughes, Mike Bishop from the director of the chamber, Al Foster, sergeant on the police force, Jeff Thatcher who owns automotive repair business on 23 South, Mike Boynstein who is, will be an ad hoc member because he obviously lives even out of state, but we're going to utilize his.
Mac Boyston.
Mac Boyston, sorry, I messed that one up really bad.
Yes, Frost, Al Frost, and Jeff Thatch.
And Jeff Thatch, and then Mike, and then also Max.
Fortston.
Well, I don't even know.
Jack Frost.
Jack Frost. Also, for some reason, I have drawn a blank on two other people, and one of the ladies is an attorney, and they're going to provide some support, and then there's a lady on CAPC. To make a long story short, Steve, Mark, and I met and had a very, very, very good discussion, received a lot of feedback already from various citizens. I would like to encourage any citizens out there that have any comments or concerns about the noise issues to please contact either myself via the city website, or contact Steve or Mark so that we can include your comments in our thoughts. We've already started on a working draft of an ordinance that will be circulating through the committee members, and certainly want to thank all the people that have so far given feedback. Thank you.
Ms. Perkypile.
None.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Uh-oh.
I need the mayor to rise, please.
Oh, I can do that. Watch this.
This is a presentation. As most of y'all have probably read in the newspapers, we're doing a fundraiser for the Legion, or actually the Legion is doing some volunteer work, and we're fundraising for them, to place American flags from one end of town to the other, crosswise everywhere. If there's a light pole, we're getting a flag. We're taking donations for this, it's going to be incredible, they will be put on light poles, so the lights are shining down, so they can stay at all times. My son lives in West Fork, they've had these up for about a year now, and it's incredible seeing these flags all up and down the street 24/7. So that's what our Legion is working on. The mayor said that he would match one $500 donation for these flags, and, excuse me, I said mold allergies. I am matching his 500 with the part of the inheritance I got from my late father, the Marine, and in my son's name, the Marine, so this is your matching 500 to go into the account.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, and I'll just make a little comment on this real quick. With the two $500 donations from myself and Ms. Snyder, and the $200 donation from my Blue Knights Motorcycle Organization, we now have $1,200 in this account. So we challenge anybody else to match any of these, or just donate, it's a worthy cause.
And give the time to November, the Friday in November, actually.
You're going to have to tell me, because I don't remember. And let me kind of go into a little, just a real brief detail of this. When we cook this thing up, this is not only to put flags on all the poles, the light poles in town, on the lit poles, the flags will become a permanent fixture which will be removable for Christmas ornaments and servicing by the power companies, because lighting regulations on the flag says it has to be a lighting fixture attached to it, or shining on it if it stays up overnight. So I think there's 34 poles from the top of Planer to the depot that have lights on them, so those will become permanent fixtures. Also, the other part of this is we're wanting to put a large flagpole and flag, not a highway flag, because those are too large and that'll cover all of Eureka Springs, at the top of Planer Hill on the Transit property, which we already have permission to do so, and it'll go between the fountain and the existing flagpole now where the, the 3 by 6 or 3 by 5 flag is now flying, we'll turn that into an Arkansas flag. So, and that's going to cost us, I don't know, five or six grand, so we're going to need some money, so we challenge community to pony up.
Okay, and then what's going on is on Friday, November 8th, at 7 o'clock, the Pine Mountain Jamboree is doing a Stars and Stripes show, a special show, to raise funds for this. They will be collecting funds, their people who want to donate to this will be recognizing some people, so that's Friday night, which of course we're kicking off the whole Veterans Weekend with, starting with the hamburger kickoff at like 10:00 in the morning, Friday morning. So that'll be a real nice Friday evening part of the Veterans Weekend kickoff. Pine Mountain Jamboree, Friday at 7:00, November 8th. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Eller.
No, I'm in a state of shock. We went through this entire agenda, this whole page, and all of the committee reports and this, in an hour and 17 minutes. I'm, that's some kind of a world record, I think.
Okay. I just have a couple more, real quick. Our next city council meeting will be November the 4th, since we're splitting it because of Veterans Day, so everybody get ready for that.
Well, that's next month.
Yes, it is. I received a notification today from the Arkansas Parks and Tourism Marketing Firm, which is CJRW, and a lot of people are familiar with CJRW, about the state's efforts to promote motorcycle tourism in the entire state, not just Eureka Springs. At their next session of the Governor's Tourismal Conference, CJRW will be handing out the new 72-page color pamphlet to the tune of 100,000 to be distributed around the state, so get ready.
How many pictures of you are in it?
I don't know yet, I haven't seen it yet.
A 72-page pamphlet?
Yes, ma'am, that's what, that's what they, that's what it said.
Oh, okay.
That's what that's in, fire is.
Yeah, because the state's spending a lot of money on this campaign.
Cool.
Next I have local events, October the 26th will be the 18th Annual HOWL, H-O-W-L, Owen, at Turfertine Creek. November the 1st through the 3rd will be Fall Diversity. November the 2nd Zombie Crawl at basement, in the basement of the auditorium. November the 2nd Village Craft Show, 9 to 5 p.m. That's all I have, entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Good job.